And to those of you who will be viewing it on delayed broadcast, allow me to introduce the board directors at the table. Starting on my left, we have Karina Hernandez, Sean Heitman, and Ben Fletcher. On my right, we have Ross Harris, Janelle Carter, and Mike Miller. At the center table with me, on my right, is Paula Newbold, the Board Secretary, and to my left is Dr. Theron Schudy, the Superintendent of Schools and the Birthday Boy. We have a public comment sheet on the table, the speaker's table, if anyone would like to address any items on the agenda. You will be allowed to speak during public comments, and you will be given five minutes to speak. The board will not be able to reply to your comments as per board policy, but we thank you for your comments anyway. Please read with me the mission statement for the Marshalltown School District.
We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
And stand as you're able instead of political allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are not.
We do have a recognition that will be done later during the board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Harris, Fletcher, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries, seven zero. It doesn't appear as if there are any recognitions on the next item on the agenda, but I think that we should recognize the birthday boy. So, maybe if we applaud, we can get him to stand up. And please join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Theron.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Theron, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Speak, speak.
I haven't really given a lot of thought to the birthday. It's been a busy day, but my administrative team was very kind, and the most notable thing was a comment in one of the cards that said, "Welcome to another year of Vipers eligibility."
Yes. The closer you get, the better it sounds.
Thank you very much. I am glad that this only falls on a board meeting every seven years.
You could probably change that, though.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, now that we've had our fun at Theron's expense. Looking at the minutes of November 19th, are there any additions or corrections? About the minutes of November 26th. Are there any items of note and personnel, Mr. Spaghetis? Looking at inter-agency agreements and contracts, we have agreements for DeGen Ed students and 26 special ed students. Three out for open enrollment. Any items of note on bills?
No.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor, 75 by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries, seven zero. I don't see anyone on the public comment. So word to you, America, already. So quickly.
No. Okay, so this is MHS December update. So the first thing we're going to talk about is sports. So we're going to talk about the swimming, the boy swimming team. So recently, the Bobcat Boy Swim Team won the Boone Invitational, and they managed to sweep nine out of the 11 events at the invite. So I talked to Ryan, he's a senior, and I just wanted to know how his season is going and how much practice have they been putting in, considering they've been getting a lot of wins and what they're up to. So he said that the boy swim team has been doing really well this year. The team has dropped time every time we slam. The team has supported each other in meets, at practices, and outside of practice. We have put in a lot of work, and it shows during the meets. So now I want to cover the French club. They've been doing a lot of things around the high school. So, I think, yeah, last month, in between the months, it was National French Week. So around the school, I've noticed that there have been compliment cards around the locker, and I really think that's kind of cute because some of the sticky notes say, "Oh, you're beautiful, adorable," which is really positive things to get around at the school. And some of my friends have been asking me, "What's that, what's that?" Since I'm in French IV, I know almost what these things say, I guess. So it's really impressive, I guess. And also, they've had a crepe party. So the way I describe a crepe is kind of like a thin tortilla with flour, milk, and eggs, and inside you can put strawberries, cream, any kind of sweet stuff you like in it. So they had that another day, and I believe they did something different each day for National French Week. And they also had a staff breakfast, and I heard a lot of good things about it from the staff. So also, particularly the French classes and French club, they celebrated Armistice Day, which is Veterans' Day. So Ms. Muso and her students displayed this in the almost front lobby. And one thing I learned in French class is that most people in Europe celebrate with red poppies to commemorate the military and civilian personnel. I didn't know that before doing this activity, and I think that's a great experience to have, not only to really celebrate or really acknowledge what the US does, but other countries. So you get like a mini history lesson while also learning about the language at the same time. Also, it was All Saints' Day, also called La Toussaint. So several French students, including myself, wrote eulogies about well-known influencers in French, and it helped classes learn about this day while also tying in their French writing skills. I know at this point, it's kind of hard for me to put in the past tense, present tense, future tense, when you're trying to write something, especially like a long piece. So not only digging your nose into a textbook and just really studying that stuff, but also applying it to something you find interesting, so like current events, stuff like that. So I think that's a really great way to keep the students on their feet and learning about new things. Okay, so the next experience I have is the DMAC and EC tour, and they were both done by French IV and Foods IV. So right now, French IV is doing a food etiquette unit. So over the past years, we've kind of got little parts of it, but this year, we're mainly focusing on that. And what I learned during this experience is that many people have different ways of defining their etiquette. And also, the Foods IV has been learning about this, too. So while the DMAC and the EC companies took us around their college tour, they also took us around their culinary institute. So they showed us what it's like to be a student there, too, and they showed us the opportunities you can get, like you can get a French scholarship just by attending there, and you can travel around the world, and you can meet new people. So we met with those current culinary students, and my group and the Foods IV ate at the bistro, which is kind of like a fine dining, fancy and table etiquette, and it's only available during the summertime, so right now it's closed. So I just put these two pictures because I was really proud of my group and myself because we knew exactly what tools to use and most people, I think, wouldn't. So I didn't even know, before starting this class, there's like five different spoons, five different forks, and I didn't know which one to use. So I learned that in French IV, and I think that's good social skills to have, you know? And I, 99% of the time, use foam plates, so this was really new to me. And that's a picture of our French IV. There's only five of us, but one couldn't go. So I think it's a really good thing to have like a small group because our teacher and the tour is more connected to answering our questions. So these are some of the announcements that are going on right now. So the student rotarians are selling tree ornaments, and I don't think they've sold right now or like out, but there's pre-orders that can be placed in the main office, and part of the profit will go to the Marshalltown Tornado Relief Fund. And that's a picture of what they look like. I think they look pretty neat, and they're not a bad price either. There's different colors, different ink colors, and it's made out of matte acrylic. The points at a sale has also been extended, and orders are still being taken until tomorrow, but they're $10 each, and there's different kinds. There's red, burgundy, jingle bells, and you order them in the MHS office, and orders taken by December 4th will be delivered on the same week. And the same day they get delivered, they're also going to continue getting a second order in. These are some of the upcoming events. There's a boys' basketball game this Friday, also the other week, next week, and after that next week, there'll be a Friday night dance that's going to be held in MHS Cafeteria. Okay, any questions?
Been busy.
Yep.
Excellent.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Thanks.
Dr. Stevenson, would you like to do? Don't walk too fast.
The next part of our board meeting is an information-only at this point, sharing with you of the proposed AT-Risk programming and budget that were in board docs, the two attachments. So the plan for tonight is I'm going to share this with you as information-only, and then I'll come back again on December 17th and ask for the board to take action to vote to approve the budget as proposed. And for those of you that may not remember, AT-Risk is the only budget, I believe, that we do mid-year for use in the following school year. So we're going to be talking about our current reality, but asking for a budget that will help us accomplish our goals for 1920. So the first document you see is a slideshow presentation of our K-12 AT-Risk programming. And as a reminder, by definition, and this is from the State Department, what defines AT-Risk is a student who, in general, needs educational support in order to meet the goals that we have established in the school district, and those can be academic goals. That would be like reading and math achievement, graduation. Personal social goals would be attendance and behavior type of goals related to social emotional growth. And then AT-Risk students can include, but are not limited to, so it definitely includes all of our children that are currently classified as homeless, as well as any current dropouts, any dropouts that have returned to our system. And then the biggest group that makes up our AT-Risk group is potential dropout. So those are students who we've been able to identify as potentially at risk of dropping out based on the factors that they're displaying to us in K-12 or prior to 12th grade. And this is dropped right out of the website from Department of Ed. Who can we serve? So this is just kind of the how we do what we do, and basically, we have to have a plan in place, and that's my responsibility to upload the information to the Department of Ed, including the budget, about how we're identifying kids and what options or programming systems or models do we have in place to help support kids in each of those areas. And then someone at the Department of Ed reads our plan and tells us, yes, you've suggested things that are within code or not. And that all used to happen in December, and now they've moved it back one month to January, so you're getting this a little bit later than when you're used to hearing about it. And for our local context, I wanted you to just kind of see or know that this isn't just a Dr. Stevenson work here. There's a whole committee of people that work on this with me. Last year, we only had 5th through 12th grade represented on the district committee, which Eric Gosslinger oversees as part of his dual role of AT-Risk Coordinator and MLA Principal. And with my suggesting, Eric and I have grown the committee to include representatives from K-12. So we have someone from all 10 schools. In some cases, it's the principal; some cases, it's a social worker, school counselor. There's a variety of people from each school, and some schools have more than one person. And we meet monthly on the first Thursday or second Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And we really use that group. Eric and Matt?
Well, hey, Matt, do you want to come up and join?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I just started without Matt. But Matt helps me, too, with AT-Risk because Matt oversees the work that the nurses, counselors, social workers do in the district in general. And so Matt and I work together with Eric to formulate the work that this committee is going to talk about and work on and view as the year goes on. And I don't know how to get to the current programming, but just to kind of give you an idea of what our dollars are being used to pay for right now, I listed in there, and this is as up-to-date as I think it can be, but it looks at us in terms of our elementary, intermediate, middle, and high, in what we use AT-Risk dollars to help support, and also what we use, in some cases, Gen Ed dollars to support. So our K-4 kids that are identified as at risk are served, in general, by social workers, counselors, and then, of course, Bobcat University in the summer. And then you can see what happens at Lenahan, the same sort of system with a little bit greater expansion. And reading intervention gets paid out of AT-Risk once you hit Lenahan because Title I picks up reading intervention for the little kids. And then, once we hit Miller in high school, you'll start to see also the addition of juvenile court liaisons and behavior interventionists in some places. And then high school and MLA branch out in a couple different ways, with that core level of support of counselors, social workers, we've been talking about, as well as adding in like Tier 2 and Tier 3 level supports, like PIER. You've heard PIER being presented here before as a place where kids can have credit recovery, summer school, and of course, the use of Edmentum, which is an online system, a course that allows kids to personalize their movement through courses. And most of that is for MLA kids, but we do have high school kids from MHS that take Edmentum courses also and are monitored through either PIER or MLA staff. And if you scroll down just a little bit further, you might ask yourself, how do we identify the kids that need all of the people and services that were listed above? And it's a matrix of sorts. There are four factors that can help us predict kids that might be at risk of not graduating on time, and those, in the most part, were driven from Iowa guidance. However, our local committee worked on these last year to make sure that they were actually pertinent for our local context. So you have Iowa assessments, and that would be where we actually dig into, not just if you were proficient or not proficient, but you were actually two or more years below grade level, which is equivalent to the 30th percentile. And that'll be the document that we've used in the past, or the assessment, but moving forward, we'll have a new state assessment, so we're going to have to revisit that this summer. And then chronic absenteeism and tardies, you've heard us talk a lot about that, and what a student would have to miss in order to, we could say, ring the bell, but ring the chronic absenteeism bell of, you know, your attendance is putting you at risk of not being able to graduate. Academic failures, this particularly comes into play at the high school and at MLA, and these are kids who are earning Ds or Fs in any of their core math, science, or English Language Arts classes that are required for graduation. Connectedness to school could be a whole board presentation in and of itself, right, Matt?
Yes.
But it's a big, long matrix of 18 to 24 factors, depending on the age of the child. And you look at all of those, there's teams of people at each school that look at that matrix and look at every child and see, these are factors that have been, I guess, vetted nationally that are connected to kids dropping out of school. For example, having an incarcerated parent, frequent moves. Help me out, there's tons of them, but I'm blanking on the others.
Which ones, the connectedness?
Yeah.
Connected as school, you do one or more activities associated with the school, even parks and rec activities.
The other, I thought of one, too, when I handed you the microphone, but it's kids that report saying, "I hate school, I don't want to be at school." That's usually an elementary one that we hear. Not sure if this is on. So once we look at every child in those four AT-Risk indicators, you have to have two out of the four, or three out of the four, depending on your age, and that's what generates AT-Risk funding behind that child. And so we worked as a committee to identify those last year and make a pretty elaborate system of recording them with an infinite campus so that a team of people will have access to AT-Risk kids, so we can actually do some program evaluation down the road to see if what we're doing is making a difference. Now can you? Thanks. And so here is just an example of some allowable service areas and expenditures that Marshalltown's currently using with AT-Risk kids. So we're spending some of the budget on credit and content recovery, so that would be for those 9th through 12th graders to make sure they're earning those credits in a timely manner so they can graduate in hopefully four years. So that pays for our subscription, our annual subscription to Edmentum. We also have a para educator at the high school who helps with Edmentum, and it pays her salary. Juvenile court liaisons, I think that's pretty self-explanatory, what those individuals do at the middle and high school, and we, as the district, pay for 75% of their salary. We have Marshalltown Learning Academy, which is right downstairs. This pays for salary and benefits for an administrator in that building, a full-time secretary, and a social worker, as well as five core teachers that are able to meet the students' needs in math, science, social studies, English Language Arts, and then electives. Number four, we use some of the other budget to cover support services for academic and mental health needs, and that can be in a variety of different staffing positions. It kind of depends on the age of the children in the building, but social workers, behavior specialists, student resource specialists. And then other academic support is generated through eighth hours at the high school. And so that's a variety of teachers that we already have on staff at the high school that, out of each department, give one or two periods of their day to help students who have to recover a unit, or a test, or a part of a course they're not currently passing. And then, of course, we have the new K-3 summer school program that we started last year with MICA, contracted service. Literacy interventionists are what you would think of as like Title I reading teachers at the elementary. There's currently two at Miller, which was an expansion, and then we have one at Lenahan.
Question before you go on.
Sure.
In number four, we used to have two behavior specialists at Lenahan. Are we going to bring that second one back?
As far as I can recollect, we've had the one person do that role, not as a special ed behavior person, but as a Gen Ed. They also have a social worker there, so between the social worker and the behavior specialist, they've been working on the behavior services on the Gen Ed side of things.
The next slide, I know we're always talking about data, right? Are we getting a good return on our investment, and especially with our AT-Risk kids here? And so these are goals that our AT-Risk program uses to measure itself. And coincidentally, these are also goals that we use to measure our overall comprehensive school program. And it was kind of, I hadn't thought to put this in, and I don't think I've put it in in past years, but I'm glad I was encouraged to do so because it's encouraging. I think we're, some of the big areas that we're seeing as connected to factors that make a kid at risk, we are making headway in. So, for example, we've increased the graduation rate, and you've heard us talk about that last summer. Our dropout rate has decreased, and our chronic absenteeism rate has also decreased. Now, again, are we still within the state average range of these things? No, we have definitely room to go, but at least our trajectory is moving in the right direction. Major behavior referrals and/or suspensions. So last summer would have been the first time that you saw that major pie chart of how many kids have earned a major, and that was 2,083 events total for PK-12. And then you would never have seen the 16-17 data because I hadn't pulled it that year, but I did go ahead and pull it, and so we did see an increase of 276 events from one year to the next. So I'm hopeful that our 18-19 data will shoot us back in the other direction, especially with all the emphasis we put on PBIS and working on social emotional learning across the district.
Or is there a tightening of what we consider to be?
That would be my suggestion, is we have began to emphasize the importance of having good behavior information. So I feel that our teachers and our staff are doing a better job at not only working with the kids, but documenting what they're doing.
And I think, too, that's an all-kids measure, but when you're talking about AT-Risk kids, you're really looking at kids that have more than one office referral because to have up to one office referral is expected of a child, or of 80% of the kids in any given year, but it's the kids that get 1 to 3 or 3 to 5 that we're really digging deeper. And so that information doesn't drill down deep into that information, and that might be something that we'll have to, as a committee, look at down the road, too, to see if our AT-Risk kids are disproportionately represented in that 2,083, which I'm hopeful, like Matt said, is going to start to level back down after the end of the school year. Bullying and harassment, again, moving in the positive direction, decreasing those reports. Reading, we increased our reading by a hair, 1 to 3%, depending on which of those grade levels you're looking at, as measured by Iowa assessments. But our math went down last year, and that was frustrating, I think, to a lot of us as we were embarking on a lot of new things in math curriculum at K-6. So hopefully, with this year's Iowa assessments, we'll have our trajectory moving back in the positive direction. And the last piece of data that I put on there, which would be new, and I'm guessing most of you are not even familiar with the acronym, SABERS. But SABERS is a social emotional tool to measure at-risk behaviors, either externalizing or internalizing behaviors. And so for the first time in September, we had classroom teachers for K-8 students fill out a questionnaire survey of sorts.
Yeah, it's 19 items that they fill out about every student. It takes about three minutes to complete, and it gives a sense about, are there things that we're seeing about their behaviors that we need to look at further? Are there any things that we may be concerned about that we're not noticing? We brought SABERS into the mix because, as a system, we're really good at working with the kids that we can openly see their behaviors, you know, the kids that are moving around in seats, the kids that are acting out in classrooms. But the kids who are dealing with things like depression, anxiety, stressors, you know, those are very internalizing things, and we don't have a good way of looking at that. So this was a tool for us to take a better look at that and see if there are ways we can head off kids before they start to get so kind of upset or so much dealing with the mental health issue. the mental health issues that they have going on, that we'll start seeing those externalizing behaviors down the road.
And that's part of a partnership with the AA, correct?
Correct.
We're piloting for the region or state.
Yes.
Right. So, the SABERS data is in the same pool of assessments that we use for A reading and A math. You've heard us talk about those, K8 too. So, kids take it in September, January, April, May. So, we'll again have SABERS data in January, and I'm really interested, not that this isn't interesting, but I'm really interested to see that number, because I'm thinking about, as a former classroom teacher, if you asked me in September, you know, to really give my thoughts on a child's social-emotional behaviors, and plus, you know, sometimes they don't show their true colors until, until the month of September's over. So, I think it'll be interesting to see how our data looks in January, because at the, in the fall, according to that, only 16% of our kids were at risk of having some social-emotional or behavioral mental health challenges in the classroom. And, and also, a glitch we found in the system, in our system, is that 241 kids didn't take the test, which is not okay, because of a administration error on our part. And so, we're going to have to make a, a different effort in January to ensure 100% of the kids get this done by their classroom teacher, just like we did with reading and math, so we can make better decisions about what supports they need. So, no, not that we want more kids to have those, that label, or those, you know, identifiers, but I, I think it'll be a better picture, at least in January.
Lisa, how many students fall into this category of at-risk?
Oh, K-12? Gosh, I'm trying to remember the number we certified in June. I want to say it was close to 40% of our student body. Maybe Paulette can pull it on bed, so I'm, just to give you the exact number.
Thanks.
So, based on those, the data I shared, how are we doing? What do we need to improve? I just noted four things, and this is what our committee has talked about too, about really keeping, you know, our foot on the pedal with chronic absenteeism, and you've, you're going to hear all of our principals say that's a big part of their Attendance Center Plan. The behavior issues were, again, like I said, focusing our Monday learning time and other time on addressing positive behaviors, working on social-emotional learning, trying to get people all on the same page about thinking that our kids' behaviors are really reflective of skills they don't have yet, not necessarily will issues. Reading and math happens to be the factor that's most prevalent for our, however many kids Paulette finds out there to be.
1,740.
1,740.
From the spread.
Yep.
Third.
Yep.
Five thousand.
Is that about 40% of our 5,000?
Out of 5,365.
Not quite. Yeah. It's about one out of every three kids, I suppose.
Students served is, what, 4,900?
Yeah.
Students served is 4,900. 5,300 would include open and roll out.
Yeah.
So, 4,900 is a third.
So, of those seven, 1,700 students, the area that we found they converged in the most, that was our, our biggest bell that they all rang, that we needed to address that maybe we weren't, was the fact that they weren't proficient in reading and math. So, that seemed to be kind of the gateway for all of these other things that happen as they mature and move through our system, meaning now I'm not going to come to school as much, now I'm not going to behave as, as well as I should, now I'm going to drop out, et cetera, et cetera. So, that you'll see in our budget, is something that we tried to address by allocating more resources to the reading and math achievement. Sorry, that's kind of hard to read up there. So, what are we, what do, what does the committee think we need? What are our priorities? There's two things in green, and those two things are in green because they're reflected in the budget increase that you see on the budget document. The items three, four, five, and six are also items that the committee and the district in either administration or others have mentioned, and I've heard more than one voice say are, should be priorities of ours. But again, I don't, I don't believe we have enough budget to accomplish all six of these areas, and so, we're trying to prioritize for next year. So, the top two priorities would be expanding Bobcat University, so we can touch more kids in the areas of reading and math. And you'll see that, that additional cost in the budget. And then, expanding IJAG at the high school. So, last summer, we used categorical funds to, with the flexibility rule, that we could, we were able to use other categorical funds to help offset the costs of an IJAG support person at Miller, and an IJAG support person at the high school. And then, this plan would allow us to increase that from two to three. And so, what the budget shows is the new person, plus taking the $40,000 we used last year from categorical funds, and putting it back in at-risk as an expenditure. Those are the two priority areas. And then, you also see there, from the elementary level, we've had quite a few people requesting over the three years, going back to full-time social workers at the K4 schools. Right now, they're 50-50, they, they serve two schools. We've also had middle school requests to be included in Bobcat University, so that kids that fail their core classes in something eighth grade have a better chance of not failing them when they get to ninth grade, and it's for credit. We had a request from the high school to increase peer, to have two, two more full-time teachers there, helping kids, and also to have a behavior specialist, like the person that was added at Miller. Well, not added, but it was repurposed, a position that had been a school counselor, was repurposed into a behavior specialist. So, and then, the last one, suspension alternative to expulsion program partnership with juvenile court. That's a pretty new request, that I'm sure is not one the board has heard much about, but it's, trying to think of ways, maybe you can explain this one better than I can.
Yeah. So, when we look at our data, and we work with juvenile court, they say, you know, the second that a student gets expelled from the school, they're about 90% are greater likely to never return to school. They're going to drop out, they're going to be in the community. Because of their education, you know, they might be someone who has trouble with consistent employment, you know, there's just a lot of things that trickle after a student drops out of school without a diploma. So, they engage talking with Eric Gosling about, is there a possibility we can look at other alternatives when students break a code of conduct that would normally consider expulsion by the board? Is there something we can do in a small program size setting, partnering together? Like, can we offer maybe a small classroom setting that we split the cost of a teacher during that period of time? Or is there a way we can partner in supporting kids, so that the school is able to hold them accountable for the disciplinary actions, but we don't want to put them on a track to most likely drop out, like the research says? They just started this conversation with us a few weeks ago, so it's very new, and we know just a little bit about it. But we are excited about any idea of how do we work with kids, so that they don't have that track of what I call life failure? Because once you don't finish school, you have trouble getting steady careers, then you have trouble doing other things, and these are the kids who most likely stay in our community.
So, that is a very quick overview of where we were, where we are, where we'd like to go. And then, the next two attachments, or it's one attachment, I believe, two pages that you can look at, was a joint budget effort with lots of support from Paulette. Thank you very much, Paulette. That gives you a glimpse at the top of our FY, our fiscal year budget for this year, and our fiscal year proposed budget for next year, so you can kind of get a feel for where our expenditures were, and where we are requesting that they go. And then, page two of that document is actually how we got, what estimations we use to calculate the monies that we'll have to work with. And with that, Paulette, do you want to walk through that?
Sure.
Please?
Sure. So, the dropout prevention budget is one of the few budget areas that we have some control and ability to increase that budget if needed. So, last year, in December of 2017, you approved a budget for the dropout prevention program of about $2.2 million. And the first, the top part of the first page is the fiscal '19, the current year actual budget. So, while we had planned for $2.2 million, what we're actually spending or estimating that we're going to spend this year on this programming is about $2 million. As Lisa mentioned, this is the only budget that we do so far in advance of the, you know, the year that it pertains to. A lot of times, actual, actual staff will change and have different costs and stuff. So, top part is fiscal '19 actual budget. The bottom part is our fiscal '20 proposed budget. In order to do that proposed budget, we simply applied a 2% increase to all the salaries and benefits, and we increased two budget areas, as Lisa mentioned. The IJAG, which is an additional in-school support service of $60,000, and that's bringing in the two that we currently have, and increasing it to three, and that is a purchase service. And then, moving, increasing the set aside for summer school from $125,000 to $250,000. So, that would get the proposed budget for fiscal '20 to $2.2 million, very similar to what was approved last year at this time. Now, on the second page, this is the actual calculation, how we arrive at, at these budgets. The dropout prevention program is a program that is funded 75% by property taxes, so there is a tax impact. So, the budget that was approved for last year is an estimated about $1.32 per thousand on the tax rate. The maximum budget that could be asked for would be potentially about $1.70 tax rate, but the proposed budget with the increase in those two programming areas would result in a tax rate of right around $1.29, and that's just estimating the taxable valuations, because of course, we don't know what taxable valuations for next year are going to be So, that just shows how we back into that, that calculation. And so, our requested modified supplemental amount, which is what we'll come back to you and ask at the next meeting, with this proposed budget, would be about $1,360,000.
So, what would the increase in tax rate be to back that up?
For the 1.36, it would be about stable, that would be stable.
Okay. So, we'd be asking for, in the plan, for a similar amount to what we had asked for last year to get approved, but we didn't act on all of that, I don't think, like any budgeting.
Right. So, we could ask, the maximum amount of modified allowable growth that you could ask for is $1,816,454. With that, there would be a tax rate increase of about 40 cents.
So, that was the, the list on that one slide, where I said three, four, five, and six, the things that we didn't say yes to, because those would, or didn't request, because those will result in a tax increase. So, that's the, that's the situation we're in right now, is do we increase what we're, we have the capacity to do to, because we know we have needs that match that amount that's out there? Or do we keep our tax rate the same, and keep those at-risk supports that we have identified as being needed on the back burner?
Really, what you're, what you're asking for is about flat for what we asked for last year.
Yeah.
The spending increase over the actual spend, but it's about flat with the request?
So, actually, right. So, what we're asking for, the increase of those two things, is it will be new services to our kids, but they won't be at an additional cost, because the budget that we had proposed last year, we are operating under budget, based on the budget that had been proposed.
Right. For this year, we approved 2.2, but the actual budget is only about 2.
So, my, my, which is great.
Yeah.
My concern's going to be, what, did we identify where these, the, where we undershot last year, and will that continue? And two, are we using carryover funds from this year? And with those two things, will this be sustainable, these programs that we're adding? Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I don't know who's my personal answer to that.
We are using some carryover funds.
Yep.
We are anticipating that we're going to carry over about $200,000 from this year. So, that is basically what is being used for the budget increase. And then, yes, going forward, our goal is always to kind of, you know, use annual current year revenues to pay for current year expenses. This budget is a little bit different, because we do have capacity there that we aren't using, because there's an additional cost.
So, if we, if we maintain these services in future years, we would expect that the budget would have to go up more than it did this year?
It depends on taxable valuations.
And the amount of at-risk kids that count to that 25%.
Yep.
Well, that's the, that's how much, that's the tax rate, but the overall budget, would, we'd expect it to go up?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we're finally getting a really good handle on how to count the 1,740 kids, and our numbers have been all over the place in previous years, because of maybe not a real solid understanding of, of those factors across all 10 schools, and having someone actually monitor the data regularly. So, I think we're getting really close to that being the, the real amount, I think.
So, is there, is there state support for, for this at all, or is it all?
For 25%.
And that's based on, is that, is that just based on how much we budget for, or is that based on the number of students?
So, this calculation is based on your certified enrollment. So, as our certified enrollment changes, and the district cost per pupil changes, lines eight and nine, that has a big impact on your budget too. You'll notice that for the district cost per pupil, we are using a current year cost, because we don't know what the next year cost is. And so, if by chance, we get 3% allowable growth, you know, that, that's going to generate a lot more funding, based on that formula, so.
But we base the, I guess that makes sense, I guess where I have trouble is, because that's all formulaic, but we're basing the, the budget request on need and spending, right, on your plans? Where am I going to disconnect or something like this? There's a, there's a capacity of what we can ask for, that's based on all those formulas, but what we're actually asking for is based on what you intend to do.
Correct.
Right.
And, and I think part of that is wanting to let some of the systems that we've started get planted, and start to see movement forward without continuing, you know, when you're continually adding a little beast, a little bit of something to the recipe, you're not quite sure what's the, you know, what was the budget decision that made the, made the data go up, made the data go down, whatever it may be. And so, you know, just based on what we saw at that summer school conversation in October too, I, we have the potential, I think, with increasing our services in summer, to catch up kids who are also having after-school tutoring, who are also having, you know, Title I services during school. We're, you know, adding communities and schools grants, we're hopefully getting a 21st Century Grant. You know, we have a lot of other things that are kind of looming out there right now that could help us in the reading and math department. And the bulk of this money goes to, I would think it's fair to say, the social-emotional side. If you look at JuCos and school counselors, social workers, a lot of those personnel at MLA and MHS.
So, I guess, summarize this to make sure I understand. So, it sounds like we can, we can add the, add what you want to, add what you're recommending this year with about a flat budget request. Possibility, maybe a likelihood. Possibility, maybe a likelihood that, that would require additional funding next year, but we do have the capacity to fund that if we, if we choose to. But it would require a larger budget, possibly a tax rate increase, depending on how things shake out.
Lisa, when is the determination made whether a student is at risk or not?
So it's ongoing. So at any time during the year, you can become at risk with any of those factors. But what we do is use the June end-of-year look at kids, and we look to see who made three out of the four, two out of the four. And then that, that carries that designation for you for the next school year. So we're going to keep you in our sight and keep you on our interventions for that whole school year, and we're going to check back again in June. And is it time to take that flag off of you or leave it on and we're going to keep supporting you in this factor or that factor? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so your, your budget of 2.2 million is based on determination that was made back in June, right?
Right, based on the count we submitted last June.
Okay.
I know, it's really hard because that is for kids we've programmed for in 1819, but then we're also hoping that number is consistent or stable for, because we're budgeting to have that many kids the next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just as a reminder, historical reminder, the spring prior to my arrival, which would have been Brian's first full year, the district had accumulated a significant amount of funds in carryover because they were presenting plans and assessing taxes to support those plans and then not carrying out all of the plans. So he then recommended to the board, the prior board, to reduce the tax rate, you know, a significant amount in order to, because we're, we shouldn't be a bank with people's money. And so we're trying to systemically evaluate the programming that's going on in the last couple of years, adjust the programming. That's why we came to you last year with what we believe would be necessary in terms of a property tax increase of 13 cents per thousand that you approved in order to implement primarily summer school across all six elementaries. But when we got to the budgeting, the budget time in April, it was determined that we did not need that, probably based on what the projected carryover was going to be, so we did not build that into the budget. It's not, it's hard for it to be an exact science in terms of planning in December and then fulfilling the program the next year. And so you want to provide a little bit of a cushion with carryover, but you don't want it to be significant because our kids' needs outweigh our ability or our capacity to fund. So we're taking a measured approach to try to work back towards using that authority, but we want to make sure before we make the ask to increase taxes or whatever, that it's for the right things that are going to bring forth the results we're looking for.
And there was quite a bit of cleanup that Paulette and I have done on this budget to use other categorical sources to pay for things that were benefiting at-risk kids and other kids. So professional development would be a good example. Like, we had, I, we had a chunk of money budgeted, budgeted in last December for professional development for all the teachers that work within this system. And there's a professional development budget that we get from the state that we work with a committee of teachers to, to use every year. So that kind of didn't make sense. Like, why would we ask the taxpayers to include that in the budget when there's already categorical funds from the state that we could use? So that's just one example of some things that we kind of, I shouldn't say we, Paulette pointed out to me that we could be doing differently than previous direction I had been given. So that kind of helped bring our budget within code or, yeah, there you go. That's what happened. We're there.
Other questions for Paulette, Darren, or Lisa, or Matt?
I like how you laid this out. While I find the at-risk budget modeling strange, I do.
So do me.
It is, it is kind of nice to see at least this piece of the budget, the way, the way you can kind of actually break it out and assign things. And I, I like that, and I, you know, you showed us where you stand and what your priorities are, so.
Thank you.
I'm good with it.
So on December 17th, it'll just be an action item, one line to approve. Perfect. Okay.
Unless there are questions that develop.
Unless anyone has questions that develop over the next two weeks.
But if we do, we'll send them to you beforehand so you can be prepared.
Yes, I would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Representative Smith, we're ready for you.
You've been ready for me for a while.
We just kept going on the agenda, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, a couple of apologies, one for being late, and then, second of all, I usually dress a little more nicely than I did. So sorry, some way this didn't get on my schedule after I told Dr. Shutey that I would come today. So anyway, so thank you for being patient with me and tolerant with me today here, so.
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
I think I would have forwarded you last week along with the other legislators, what our board had determined to be.
The four items, yeah.
Legislative priorities. And then B had provided me also with the IESB, which very closely.
Yeah.
So as we've done in the past, maybe you could open with what your thoughts are as you're entering in the 2019 legislative session and your hopes.
Well, this is my 10th session in the legislature, and I feel like that I've always been a strong supporter of public education and that we need to have a strong pre-K through community college system here in the state of Iowa and need to be adequately funding all levels of education. I don't feel that that's been the case on the state's side now for several years and would anticipate that it's going to be a tough budgeting year this year again and that probably the areas that we're interested in will have difficulty with funding again. So.
Okay.
Sorry.
One of the items that our board identified and has for the last three years is concerns relative to unfunded or underfunded.
Right.
Mandates, which two governorships ago, there was a lot of communication about an intent not to have any unfunded mandates.
Right.
And I would say there's been more underfunded than unfunded, but our, our most recent concern is around the, what came through the, on the bus with financial literacy. Because many districts didn't have that as a requirement or course, not that it shouldn't be. I mean, I'm, actually, I'm very supportive of it coming into play, but as you might be aware, the, the code that was developed or law is very explicit in terms of what needs to be taught.
Right.
And so, on the one hand, because there was no funding to support it, we're required now to repurpose something else curriculum and staffing-wise in order to accommodate it and business teachers, social studies teachers, since the standards fall within that.
Yeah.
Or math teachers, or can do it according to the code, I think. But the, the real concern is that this takes effect with this year's juniors when they graduate a year from now. So districts are scrambling. I think that there will be an effort to push forward a bill to ask for some extension before it's a requirement, but the problem is, we can't wait for that. I mean, time is of the essence because we're already trying to develop curriculum in order to implement it even as early as second semester this year, maybe an online option or something. But, you know, kids register in the spring for the next year, which, you know, our, see, all of our kids did, including seniors. So these juniors that are going to be the first group by law to be expected to accomplish that are going to have to have it in their schedule in one way, shape, or form next year. And we're trying to figure out, number one, how do we enhance the elective course that we currently have in order to possibly accommodate it? How do we create a course that meets the law that our social studies department, for which the standards fall in, can repurpose current curriculum in order to ensure in the future that all incoming students have that required course in lieu of world history for a semester or something like that?
Yeah.
And then with the online, there's, there's cost potentially involved in the development of that to give an alternative way for students to pass the course and that sort of thing. So I, I serve on the DE Superintendent's Advisory Board, for which we have another meeting with Dr. Weiss tomorrow. So I'm hoping that there's some further guidance given related to that, but up until now, the only thing that has been shared face-to-face is, you know, regardless of efforts to try to improve this situation, you better plan on implementing the laws that's been established. And there hasn't really been any guidance other than using the code language in order to try to figure out how to map out this pathway.
Okay. So financial literacy without the financing, so.
And we're having to, we're, what, giving up a social studies class? So is some industry class will have to be dropped to do this?
Well, either reduced or dropped or offered, you know, as an elective in lieu of, because this is a half-credit requirement. So it's a semester-long course that now has to be accomplished from the junior year on. So we need a short-term plan to help these juniors accomplish this. Well, actually, we need a short-term plan to help the current freshman sophomores and juniors accomplish, accomplish it, or at least sophomores through juniors. And then we need a long-term plan for how it's just going to become a natural part of the sequences of courses that are taken. And there's no funding to add additional teachers in the general fund for this. In fact, we're hoping to be able to manage our budget due to enrollment declines, was not to reduce people versus adding people. But, you know, another area of great importance is computer science. And there's been a lot of strong recommendation and encouragement to infuse more computer science courses, not only at the secondary, but to do more explicit instruction with programming and coding at other levels as well. And again, that's something that fortunately, I think we've been relatively strong in our approach to that. K-12, we've, the board has been very supportive of getting to a one-to-one, closer to a one-to-one ratio, pre-K-12 with access to technology. But to do explicit computer programming instruction or coding instruction is going to require people with special skills to do that. And again, what's that going to, where's that going to come from? What's going to go in order for that, if it's a standalone course?
Yeah. Right. Okay.
Any idea where SAV's going to fall this year?
No, I read your information on that, and I don't. I hope, I agree with what you put forth as concerns with that. So I favor taking away the sunset altogether and a push for that, but we'll see.
And I think I shared the same thing last year. We're working towards having a 10-year long-range facilities improvement plan, but every year that that doesn't get resolved.
The difficulty with bonding.
Less bonding capacity, so.
Right, yeah.
The flipside of that is to do the things that you need to do. You have to go after bond referendums, which some districts have already been doing, which we would greatly like to avoid.
Yeah. And you would like us to make decisions on money early so that you can beat deadlines for taxation, property taxes, which I agree with as well.
Mental health raised to a high level with the IESB legislative priorities, which I know is close to your heart.
I'm working on some fairly comprehensive legislation in that regard. I think there are a number of things that we need to do. We have a, all mental health professionals, there is a shortage of all of them, psychiatrists. I think the average age is around 53 now of the psychiatrists that we have left in the state of Iowa. And so the number of licensed social workers, the number of licensed psychologists, the number of counselors, all of those areas, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, we have shortages in all of those. And so unless we do some efforts at comprehensive training for people who have desires to go into those professions, we're not going to get them in. And so we need to recreate or reinstitute some of the training dollars that we've had in the past to get people to go into these professions now. The situation with managed care and reimbursement is a major drawback as well, so hopefully there will be some more effort to resolve those concerns during this next session. Having started the mental health services in Marshalltown School District back in '91, I'm a great advocate for those services being provided in our buildings. These are where the families and the children feel the most comfortable receiving services. We have less time of parents needing to pick up children, take them into the center, then back, and greater coordination can occur with all of the educators and other staff of the facility in helping the children as well. So that will be part of that. Another concern I have is that, it's a curious thing, when I work in substance abuse treatment, the person, whether they were seven years of age or whatever age they are, they are the keepers of confidentiality. In mental health work, the parents are the keepers of the confidentiality, which 99.9% of the time, we want that to be the case. But I've proposed legislation, and we'll do it again, that children who are 14 and above who have thoughts of danger to self or others ought to be able to seek those services without parental permission. So that'll be part of what I propose as well.
Thank you. Another item that was a smaller item on our original list was school calendars, and I know it's.
Yes.
You know, that's probably long passed, but this year is a, next year is a perfect example of the dilemmas created by identifying a particular date, knowing that the state fair, for example.
Yeah.
You know, the calendar rolls. And so the state fair will end the Sunday prior to the official start date on Friday, the 23rd. And then the dilemma is, the schools have, students come in for one day before a weekend. And so, like in our case, we're going to push it to the 26th, which I'm sure the advocates for later start dates love, but it also then results in a later June, you know, finish. And so I think I said to you last year, if not the year before, that, you know, if we can find some reasonable compromise where it protects the state fair and youth employees, which I think is a big part of it, too, to be able to work that, why can't it be the month, you know, the 23rd or the Monday following the state fair's conclusion or something like that? I know the tourism industry would, has or will lobby hard against that, but in order for us to do what we need to do educationally, I just think it makes good sense. It protects what Governor Branstad talked about, which was the state fair and the availability of people to attend without, you know, the conflict with school, but it also allows school to start at a, maybe a more reasonable time when it's before the 23rd.
I'm certainly open to that.
What's the possibility of getting the Education Committee to start looking at the school funding formula?
So that it's more equal is what the concern is.
IASB, I was at the delegate assembly and so listened to all of that discussion from all the districts across the state. And the number of things that are unequal in the school funding
Yes.
formula are growing.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, the IASB even put in to include the actual cost of special education into the school funding formula. Well, that amounts to a heck of a deficit for us in
Yes.
here in Marshalltown that goes back into the tax base, which essentially keeps you from doing other things. We were just talking about the at-risk funding formula, which is 75% tax supported. It keeps us from making all of those suggestions because this board has been very cognizant of the tax base and raising taxes
Right.
for years. So there are so many inequities in the school funding formula that really need to have a look at, whether it's one or 10.
Yeah. So the question is,
Possibility?
What's, what's the possibility of them looking at that? I hope that they will, and every year, that I hope that they will look at that. Whether they do, I wish I had a more definitive answer, B, whether they will look at that or not.
Another, you had mentioned pre-K through, you know, 12, or community college
Right.
or what have. And which obviously is really important for us. And we've developed a very strong and in some cases seamless process for our kids to attain a lot of dual credit with, through Marshalltown Community College.
Right.
The amount of supplemental funding, however, for those college credits hasn't changed,
Right.
you know, probably since the inception, maybe.
I was going to say, yeah.
And that, and so with the pinches that are being put on the community colleges despite their efforts to try to not create further hardship for, you know, the public schools, it's almost gotten to a point of they have no recourse really but increase or start charging fees for things that they hadn't, like books and stuff like that. The flip side of it is a lot of the smaller districts who have even maybe less capacity to accommodate students taking up to the maximum of 20 some credits a year are limiting what their kids can take.
Correct.
So I think that there were, I know that as a result of some discussion that we had with the area legislators with Iowa Valley last year, it kind of got people's attention. And my hopes are that there'd be a continued effort in this next legislative session to look at what can be done there. Because there's, once again, there's a big push from the governor's office and the legislature in the state to be looking at work-based learning experiences and trying to figure out how to create pipelines of future employees for middle school jobs. Well, the community colleges and public high schools are critical factors in that. And in order to do that, again, without additional funding is extraordinarily difficult. So.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, one of the dilemmas we have is the amount of debt that young people are coming out of college with in general. And if we have a strong dual program like you're talking about, we can, we have some districts that have more people who graduate with their AA degrees before they get their high school diplomas. And arguably, that cuts, cuts, cuts the cost of college education and half to do that. That's one of the ways that we can stretch and make college more affordable for more young people. So that funding does need to be increased and is part of the overall public education funding increases that are needed.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mark?
A hush fell over the crowd.
It doesn't always when I say that.
No, I know. Yeah.
We thank you very much for
You bet. Thank you. And
joining us this evening and giving us your wisdom.
Yeah. Please contact me with concerns that you have too. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
You're on for calendars.
Mr. Potter, you want to join? So as we shared at the last meeting and discussing the district calendar, we saw feedback from both our employees as well as parents.
Yep. Yep. And then you'll see the summary of the results from the survey that was taken, sent out right before Thanksgiving. And then we closed the survey late last week. Had 202 respondents. And as you, as we can expect, it's going to be a mixed bag of different topics that people want to talk about. Spring break rose to the top as far as that goes. People wanting to maybe cut that a few days and maybe get out earlier in the spring. Some, some wanted to keep spring break. Some, you know, there was a mixed bag. But as far as feedback on that, there's no built-in snow days in the calendar, which we haven't had, I don't believe this past year either. So, yeah. Some requested that early out Wednesdays would be back, while some said they liked the full day professional development. So, so we, this new calendar moves forward the full day professional development as we have this year. And then many said the calendar looks good and it's comparable to the current school year. And then we had many, many liked the two full weeks of winter break for students as a time for family to travel. And then a few didn't like the back-to-back professional development days on January 2nd and 3rd. So, yeah.
Yeah. The challenge with the built-in snow days, those are usually built in at the expense of professional development days being converted back to student days. And particularly now that we're on, you know, we plan those days, Lisa and her team, plan those professional and Matt, professional development days, probably six months or so in advance to the school year coming. And oftentimes, there's speakers that are lined up, which you have to line up maybe a year or two in advance. It just greatly complicates if you push that to, for example, the end of the year. It almost negates your ability to do what you had planned, or it makes no sense to do what you had planned in January, for example, in May or June. So that becomes a challenge. So we, we have gotten away from building those in as of late. The, the idea of providing two days on the back end of winter break is because, once again, the way the calendar rolls, as I talked about earlier with August 23rd falling on a Friday, with January 2nd and 3rd falling on a Thursday and Friday, we just felt that bringing students back on those days would be a disservice to those that travel or travel, as we know, many of our families and students do, an extended distance and are probably going to be gone anyway. There's a lot of districts that, that offer professional development in this fashion. Probably be a first timer, first in a long time for Marshalltown. And so I think it'll be an interesting experiment to see how that goes. And, and again, if, for reasons that we don't like, or patrons don't like, or staff don't like, we can revisit that in, in future calendars. But I think it's, this way, we are able to get staff as well as students out earlier than we otherwise would by having two of those contracted days beyond those dates versus if we let everybody off on the 2nd and 3rd, and all of a sudden Friday, January 5th becomes the next week, you know, Monday and Tuesday at a minimum, let alone if we have any snow days. Any questions that the board has relative to the calendar or the feedback? And I, and I provided you, I think, the comprehensive feedback is well to look at.
I read the six pages of comments, or however many there were. And there were a number of things, questions raised as to past practice. One of them was raised as to having had two calendars in the past to compare. Choose one, select one. Which one do you vote for? I remember teachers voting. It took care of the question that was raised. I thought that last year, and as I read the comment, I remembered it as well, that the question was raised, as long as it was a 50-50 split on spring break, that we would alternate years. We'd have a spring break one year, the next year not, and back and forth. So that didn't occur this year either. Maybe a shortened, not that I'm suggesting changing the calendar at this point, but a shortened spring break instead of no spring break or something along those lines. I would certainly like to see the district go back to creating two alternative calendars. One with a spring break, one without, one with the days in January for in-service, the day in November, December, whenever. We've gone away from giving teachers as a whole that input. They were allowed to make comments, knowing full well, and I understand the reasons why the decisions were made this year, that it wasn't going to get them anywhere. I had a number of people say to me, so what are they going to do with our comments? And my question was, I don't know. So I would like to see us doing that teacher input. Yes, we have teachers from all the buildings or all the levels or whatever at the calendar committee, but that still doesn't get the feedback of staff. So I would suggest that we go back to creating two calendars next year in the committee and allowing teachers to say, I like option A or B, and you'll have full teacher input.
But when we did that last year, didn't it come back 50-50 and it really?
We didn't have two calendars.
Well, when we gained input, what?
We gained, we gained input.
And it came back?
Pretty close, 50-50.
So it doesn't really tell us anything, does it?
That question didn't. If you give me, the question was, do you want a spring break or not? I don't know. If it means I'm going to go until June 10th, I don't want a spring break. But if it means that something else, I mean, teachers really need to be able to look at that calendar and see the results across the year and not just one question. So I would really like staff to be able to see two calendars. Here's with a spring break, here's without, here's with an early start, here's with a long Christmas winter break, here's with a short winter break, here's with, and let them make those decisions.
Is it a fair guesstimate that it'll come back 50-50?
No. It never did in the past. I, I had probably an 80-20 split in my building when they were actually comparing calendars and not just the question, do you want a spring break or not?
Well, we also surveyed staff on professional development, and that's how I think we fell upon the, trying the full day professional developments as well. I think that, I'm trying to recall off the top of my head, I know one of the groups, and I think it was the parents, felt more strongly about retaining spring break. And I think our staff was a little bit on the other side. But when you looked at the totality of all of it leaned towards
I think it's switched. I think, I think staff was like
Staff wanted spring break.
52, 48. And then parents were like,
Yeah.
it was like, you know, 49, 51, but opposite, really close. Yeah.
And I think we, I know I suggested that we could look at doing something like alternative years, but we didn't commit to that. We didn't tell them that we were going to do that this year. But, yeah, we can certainly survey the committee to see what, what changes they would like us to entertain and then try to build those into at least two different calendars.
I think more, more input's good. I like your idea. If you're going to get input from teachers, let's get input from families too. Teachers are an important source of input, but they're one data point and a bunch of data points when, when I vote on what the calendar would be. So don't exclude, when you're getting input, don't exclude groups of people from getting that input.
Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to
I believe we're setting a public hearing.
Set a public hearing. Yeah. Set a public hearing on Monday, December 17th at 5:00 PM for the purpose of the school calendar, 1920 school year.
You need a motion for that?
Pardon me?
You need a motion for that?
I do.
I move what you just said. Set the public hearing for that date and time.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second what Ben said too. Motion what B said.
Fletcher Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same. The motion carried 7-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rex?
Thanks for letting me come in after eight months. It's a pleasure to be back here. I'm requesting permission to seek bids for buses, three new buses for the fleet. We have a fleet of 47 buses. One of our buses is, that we're looking at replacing is 2,001. It's got 90, almost, 96, almost 100,000 miles on it. It's probably over that now. I didn't look at it. This was a few weeks ago. I wrote this mileage down. We'd like to continue moving, looking at gas buses versus diesel here in town. And the buses we would be replacing are ones that are doing these quick, short trips around town. And we would just like get some bids, bring it back to you in about a month to make you, for you to make a decision on.
Questions for Rex?
So in one of the emails we get from IS, IASB is the news clips from around the state and the country. And there's a $3.15 million option for state, whether it's grants or funding support to purchase diesel versus gas buses? I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. I'm also familiar with Volkswagen settlement.
Yeah, that's it.
Looking, that's for diesel. It's also for electric. So we would look at both of those to see if we can get that grant. Then we would look at the diesel. But the diesels here, the short runs that we make here in town are, are tough on those buses. We got to take them out to Highway 18 and move them a little bit quicker.
So can we, can you look at a diesel then for these three buses?
Oh, we're looking at everything for, for the buses.
Okay. I'm sorry, because I thought you said you wanted gas versus
We would like to get gas, but we're looking at everything and the best deal out there.
Okay. So will we have an answer if we can apply for this money before you need to go out and run a bid?
I think it's all simultaneous with doing the bid work as well as applying at the same time. Because one of the companies I talked with is they help with the application for the grant at the same time. They're putting together your bid for you.
Wonderful.
So Paul and I briefly have talked about it. We just haven't had time to sit down and do a lot with it.
Thank you.
Did you say you were going to look at electric too?
Yeah, we want to look at electric as well because through the VMW case funding that they, state received from them, they pay for a, the station to put, for charging as well as a pretty hefty amount on discount towards a bus.
I think that if, if you're just getting a bus to drive around town on short trips, that that may be more feasible.
That's, yeah, that's what we want to look into and talk with them and talk with the county school districts here in Iowa that have gotten them to see how they're doing. It's not looking at right now, long trips, because we're not sure there'd be a place to charge when we got there. But for our, our local trips, we think long-term, if we're looking long-term, that could be a good cost-efficient way to go for bussing. But we want, we're looking, had a company send us repair, maintenance and stuff like that, so we can get an idea of what the annual cost to maintain those electric buses would be compared to the annual cost of what it takes to maintain a diesel or gas bus.
You said it was a 2,001 with 96,000 miles. You know, that's reasonably old in terms of age, but reasonably young in terms of miles.
Might, yeah.
And so, you know, I would never think about at 96,000 miles I was, no, it's probably got a whole bunch of life left in it.
It's given us some fits. I mean, we're starting to see it frequently in the, in the shop. So there's just reasons for the ones, the three that we're looking at. They are, there's reasons we're looking at those.
Other questions, comments? Go forth and prosper.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And now we move to board policies.
As far as the first readings of the four policies, there's been no changes to what was presented to you at the last meeting. 312.31 again was an adjustment to reflect past practice as it relates to administrator.
I have a question on that one.
Yep.
The decision, the change is made in vacation days being used in July. Does that still include the 10-day carryover?
This would be, well, it would all be, it doesn't come out of the 10-day carryover. They, they could use their days in July for the preceding year, but they'd still be able to carry 10 days as they have in the past.
Okay, but that's not written anywhere.
We, in terms of just clarifying that that's the case.
That administrators can carry 10 over.
Okay.
I know we were trying to get everything in writing so that there weren't any past practices that weren't done, but.
Yeah, we can add that and bring that back.
You add that in as well, so that doesn't become a question.
Okay. Private instruction, 604.1 was a new policy that we presented from IASB. The same, let's see. 903.1 was a new policy as well. I'm sorry. 903.1 were new policies as presented from IASB at the last meeting. 904.1 on transporting students in private vehicles also was a new policy. 604.6, we adopted the IASB policy.
And renumbered it 604.1. May I have a motion to adopt 604.1, 903.1, and 904.1?
So moved.
Second. Heidman, Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries 7-0.
And we'll bring 312.31 back.
And 312.31 comes back. Now, these are, do you want to do the new policy? You want to do the 505.6 first?
Yeah. 505.6 was a new policy that we're recommending that supports our current and past practice or we're recommending from IASB be approved, or it would come back to you at the next meeting for approval.
I have a question on that one.
Yep.
It says if a student graduates early, they're no longer considered a student, they're considered an alumnus. Does that mean they, they'll forfeit the opportunity to be in any sports activities, right? They're, they're out, okay.
The only thing, they could still participate in.
Commencement, that's it. Okay, thanks.
505.7 has changes made to it because of deletions that are coming up in the 600 series?
Yeah, we added a couple sentences from IASB, but some of these policies were also reflected in other policies that we have.
So 505.7 will need to come back. I need a motion to delete 704.6 because the information from it has been added to the other policies coming up in the 600 series and some in the 500 series.
Move for approval.
Second. Miller, Carter, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. 704.6 is deleted. So now, 605.1, Student Progress Report and Conferences is now renumbered as a 505.1, but it does have a minor change in it. Are you okay with the change which goes to semester? Yes, no? So we can mark 605.1, which is now 505.1, as reviewed.
Does that need to come back?
Nope. 605.2, which is now 605.8, the Accountability Test Integrity and Test Preparation has been changed, so it will need to come back.
Yeah, and it had the old language from No Child Left Behind, so we simply inserted the state required, stated or.
Those of us who are all, those are fighting words, no child left behind. 605.4, Graduation Requirements and Graduation Ceremonies, as well as 605.5 Educator Records, Education Records. We've already done that one. No, we didn't. And 704.6 Educational Materials are all to be deleted because they have been added to other. And the new 605.4 are graduation requirements. But I have a motion to delete 605.4, 605.5, and 704.6.
I think we already deleted.
We just did 704.
We, okay, sorry. So just six. Okay, 605.4 and 605.5. Heidman and.
Second.
Fletcher, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries 7-0. So that leaves us with 605.4R, which is now 505.5 Graduation Requirements, and it's been changed, so it will need to come back. Are there any questions on any of those policies or any of them that are coming back other than Ross's question? Okay. Mr. Potter, anything of note?
Family Cody night coming up Wednesday, 5:50 PM at another middle school. STEM, robotics, all sorts of technology there. Students have to act, and so it's always fun. Or annual, I don't know.
Come and watch students do things at their age that you didn't even know about when you were there. Nothing legislative other than what Representative Smith had to say to us. Please remember that our next board meeting is December 17th. Woodbury will make its presentation, and Janelle is on for policies. We need to finish IASB reports. Lisa, do you want to start?
Of course. I attended the pre-conference day, which was an AM and PM session. And the AM session, I was in School Finance 201 with Paulette. I wanted to come up to the table. By myself.
Need a microphone.
Okay, rewind. I attended IASB pre-conference day, and there was an AM and PM session that I was able to attend. The AM one was Finance 201 with the gentleman who, Gary Sinclair, right? Who came and did our presentation boardwork session last year. So it was a nice opportunity for Paulette and I to get a whole stack of all kinds of reports of the 330-ish school districts across the state. And then they had gone through, he and his team, and highlighted Marshalltown, like for us, and all the other school superintendents that were there, business people, to see where Marshalltown fell relatively, relative speaking, according to like our textbook evaluation, our per pupil spending, all of that kind of stuff. So it was a nice reminder of everything I studied in School Finance in my superintendent's classes. And, let's see. Oh, and then in the afternoon session, Dr. Shudey and I were signed up for the same one. And the name of the presenter was Michael Dorn, and it was a, the title of his session was kind of interesting to me. It was called School Safety in Balance, Enhancing Safety While Improving School Climate. So we work on school climate here, obviously, in different ways, but we're also, you know, constantly being asked questions about school safety, what safety procedures we have in place. And so it was not, it was an interesting session. It wasn't, I think, what Dr. Shudey and I thought it would be, but it was a packed house. He was a return presenter, and he'd been a police chief in, somewhere in Georgia, but has traveled and spoken all around the world about school safety. And he and his team come in and do audits, and this was my one takeaway. He was talking about the best-laid plans, and he had all these, you know, examples of he's been all these different places, and people customize their plans to meet their, their environment, right? But what his team does, at least what he demonstrated to us, is he pulled a teacher, or maybe it was a board member, a person up out of the audience, and then he shows these little vignettes up on the projector, and he's, the person's looking at a picture of like, maybe it's a student pulling a weapon out of a backpack, and it's a teacher in front of a Spanish classroom or something. And then he's standing to the side of the person, and he's reading a script saying, this is what's happening, what are you going to say? What's the first thing you do? What's the second thing you do? And he's trying to get that person to, in a heightened sense of panic, remember the training that we have worked so hard to give people. And then they do these like interator tests where they go through and pull samples of staff out of buildings and put them in these hypothetical situations to try to apply the training, the safety training, that whatever that may be, that their school has provided for them. And he didn't have very interesting, or he didn't have very great statistics to share with us because truly, in the, in the heat of the moment, people forget what they're supposed to do, and they panic and, and do what comes naturally. So the whole, at least my takeaway was, the whole point of that was that, yes, we need to train people, but then we need to repeatedly, 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 repeatedly put them in practice situations, in unique situations like, which as a principal, I was guilty of this too, but like, yes, schedule the fire drill when everyone's at lunch. It's really inconvenient, but it happens. Like, you know, this is kind of how our world is. People are very strategic about when they want to commit acts of violence in school. So it was just, it was pretty intense. He had a lot of graphical, violent graphics that he shared with us, but it's, it's, it was a definite reminder of what we're being faced with and also kind of, my connection was like back to curriculum. It's the same thing with teachers. Like, we train teachers when we get new materials or we have new programs or things to do, but then, you know, it's like, well, we trained you, and then you're like left your own devices. And then what happens when half the class is gone, or these three kids are sleeping, or, you know, like all these different psychology or psychological things that happen, and then you're faced with the chore of still doing your job at a high level. And that was kind of what he was doing with safety too, so it was interesting. That's what I learned.
Thank you. So as Lisa mentioned, the first day, the pre-service day, we had an Urban Education Network Superintendent's meeting in the morning, and I joined her in the afternoon at the school safety workshop. And as she indicated, I've always found it an interesting balance between, you know, how do you implement a variety of physical or behavioral strategies to deter potential violence in the schools and yet retain it being a well, open and welcoming environment, whether it be to students or staff or, or parents. There, there's no question that no two situations are exactly alike. And so similar to talking to students and staff about ALIS, you want people to have options and to be able to think quickly about what is the best option given this scenario or this situation for me to protect students, protect myself from those events. I think both of us thought it was going to be a little bit different than it was. I thought a lot of time was spent trying to convince board members, particularly of the importance of doing these types of things, these safety things. And obviously, Iowa's in a better position now that we have legislation regarding emergency operation plans that will go into effect next year. As I think Janelle mentioned and a few others regarding the full-day convention, I thought the first keynote, Matt Burdough, on generational divide was outstanding. And I thought it was really intriguing now that I'm on the front end of the generations, or the back end, I'm not sure. But, you know, just the idea that we've got five distinct generations in many cases working together in the workplace and with the huge effort in trying to get people to collaborate, to get the work done, the right work, it's important to understand some of the differences in those generations and for me to, at times, step back before, I guess, reacting to, you know, people's different ways of communicating or of doing things. Kevin Honeycutt was, who's kind of a technology guru evangelist, spoke at the luncheon, and I thought his was very interesting in that he spoke very strongly about making sure that teachers and/or schools pursue personalized and differentiated approaches to teaching and learning to meet all kids' needs and not to paint them into a box of only being able to learn a certain way or to be assessed a certain way. And I think he used one of his children quite a bit as an example of someone that was, you know, by traditional standards would be considered different or unique. And yet, you know, how do we encourage them being able to be themselves as well as to communicate what they know and learn and demonstrate it differently than maybe what traditionally would be the case? So I thought that was really good. And then I was there for the last keynote, which was James Spellos, and, and he, his presentation was mainly to present what some of the latest technologies are and the capabilities. A lot of what he talked about was not just virtual reality, but augmented reality and some other things that are going on. So it was very interesting to see, to try, to envision what the world's going to be like, you know, probably in five or 10 years or sooner. Much of the equipment would be, you know, very difficult to access at capacity for students, but we can, as we're looking to build students' capacities to access and/or utilize that sort of equipment, I think it's neat to see what currently is on the horizon and in life as well as school as far as technology is concerned. I did also go to a breakout on computer programming as it related to one school district's effort to try to ramp up meaningful ways to engage students. And, you know, the primary intent was to go learn, as always, about new things, but sometimes attending those presentations, and that was the case with this one, it just further affirmed a lot of the great things. further affirmed a lot of the great things that we're already doing. So, I don't know that there was so much new learning as affirmation that even though they had made an extended effort to work with a consultant and to start to implement different ways of integrating technology throughout their curriculum than a lot of the things that we are already doing.
I have some of the very same opinions about the guest presenters, the major keynote presenters that you've already heard of. But I think the biggest part of the time that I was there was essentially five hours of legislative work with the delegate assembly. I, I have been going to the delegate assembly for a number of years, and I have to honestly say that I think that the tough budget times are making school districts more self-serving than the same. I think that school districts are looking at their specific needs more and stronger than looking at school, public school education across the state. And I think that part of that came to play in, well, I sent you the legislative priorities, so you'd have them for our legislators who are visiting with us this meeting and next. And it took us the full five hours to come up with these four. There was arguing. They fortunately had a parliamentarian who kept things from becoming totally divisive, but there, there was a tremendous, if anybody was up for wild and craziness, you should have been the delegate, because the assembly was bizarre. I have to honestly say again that I think that school districts are becoming more attuned to what it is that they personally need than what school districts across the state of Iowa need. And I think it's purely because funding has become so minimal, and we are making do with far less than what we need to do the job well. So, I would entertain any person who has a political mindset to attend the delegate assembly next year. Please? Because politics is not my cup of tea, but it certainly became it for a very long time. We missed lunch, what can I say? So, they held lunch for 400 and some delegates sitting there, but it was very divisive. It was argumentative. It was one of those, you only need a simple majority, so we have one vote over half to get to, there were not decisions made that were 90% of the schools there. So, I, I think that if you look at legislative priorities, you don't see but one of the ones that we had on our list, on IASB's list. So, what have we done tonight to improve education for all students?
We discussed the at-risk budget to be...
Very large at-risk budget.
To be proposed, I guess, for approval next meeting. Lot of good work going on there.
We might get new school buses?
Then we can get them here. Put them in the seats. I think the students are becoming more comfortable with their role in presenting. They did a nice job tonight. Now, if we can just get the three of you to speak up when there's something that you'd like to respond to, like maybe the school calendar?
More spring break.
And as a senior, she's getting out early anyway, so. My, go ahead.
I was gonna say, well, it's always good to have the legislators in here, hear their perspective and to share our hopes.
His perspective was not too rosy. So, I think by listening to what Mark had to say, that the 2% salary increase that you put into the at-risk budget may be high.
We might be able to get down to number three.
Yeah. My quote for this evening comes from Douglas MacArthur. "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others." As we go into the quarterly evaluation of our leader, may I have a motion to move into closed session, recommended to evaluate the superintendent as provided by Section 21.51I of the Code of Iowa. Roll call vote. Oh, I need a motion first.
So moved.
Second. Fletcher Hernandez. Now, we need a roll call vote. That would be you.
That would be me.
Aye.
Carter.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Heitman.
Yes.
Fletcher.
Yes.
Niblock?
Yes.